All here with any who live by this hand.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Say hi.
Thank you so much.
Hopefully will. Yeah, yeah.
So it says wait right there. I don't have a copy. He's unhappy with us. Can you have a copy? Show me your paper.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. He wrapped it up. Thank you. Oh, it was good, Mark. And the six people are on.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
We got sound. Recording in two different places. You good to go? See if it works. Thank you for joining us to see the big folks when you're talking before. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a redeemed justice law.
Chris Miles.
Here.
Joe Carroll. Ella Cowan.
Here.
Christina Durkey.
Here.
Amanda Durkey.
Here.
John Guglielmo.
Here.
James Dunn.
Here.
And Penzance.
Here.
Uh, total end of the conference.
Nobody is gonna make.
I will then not read that portion there. All right, I'll pay the part of the meeting recognition of successes.
So we have two this month. We'd like to recognize Jayden Moser for his recognition places second in Skills USA Carpentry Competition. Carpentry Competition at the local Bosse's. Skills USA is like, um, you know, future business leaders of America, the FFA. And it's a very tough competition. The children have to show their knowledge. He had to show some math skills on how to do the mathematics for a staircase. And if any of you have ever tried to do that, it's not easy. So he did a great job and came in second. So it's not just, you know, hooking industry. I believe he's a junior. We're also recognizing Theo Clark for being published in The Chronicle. Kelly Vaughn for recognition of winning the National Children's Dental Health Month Coloring Contest. She came in first place. Beautiful job. And then the next four are for their participation in the Washington County Area Music Teachers Association Festival. Ali Cutler, Gabriel Durkey, Lenell Colvin, and Ashton Levodis, as well as Kayden Carter. And they all participated in the major band festival.
Now, just to talk about that, my daughter was in that for several years. It's a tough gig.
It was, um, both performances of junior band and senior band were really, really incredible. And it's a lot of time for them in that short amount of time. Yeah, it was really, really, really nice.
And it's a, and it's a great opportunity for our kids because usually they're the only chair here at Fort Ever. So they got to actually play with other, you know, saxophone players, clarinets, and everyone else. So it's a real good event for them to participate in and I'm proud of them for making this.
That's great. That's awesome.
Big waves for the whole school. Okay, um, some of our elementary success. Our second graders had a successful month of working on their writing skills. Mrs. Moore's class researched rabbits in Eastern Nonfiction Science Unit and added some fun fact stories about rabbits. Students learned about different kinds of rabbits, what rabbits eat, life cycles, and facts versus opinions on rabbits. Students used a variety of critical thinking skills to complete their tasks. The culminating activity was to publish a rabbit project and a writing piece to display in the hallway. And this was a fun project and a meaningful project for all students. So nice doing that. On the other side, Mrs. Peck's second grade was also busy working diligently on writing piece along with some artwork. Throughout the year, her students have been working on building up their writing standalone. For this piece, the students first listened to a story called "Spring." Next, they did a pre-write describing spring using their senses, took some time to create a picture of the spring in their mind, and then wrote about it. They incorporated similes describing words and proper sentence structure. Students then matched this writing with artwork on blossoming cherry trees, and they created a mixed media piece showcasing their creativity and individuality. This project is now proudly displayed in our hallways. Nice job. Second graders were busy. And then kind of continue on what Mark said. I also want to spotlight two of our students. Congratulations to our third grader, and that's Kaylee Mon, you mentioned. She did win the Fidelis Care Dental Health Coloring Contest, and she won a trophy and then a whole set of coloring markers to share in her classroom. So Kaylee did a great job, and she brought those back to her classmates. And the other third grader, again, Theo Clark, we just heard about him. He was publishing The Chronicle, his paper last one. His submission was, uh, "What is Something You're Good At?" Theo is a robot enthusiast and loves to talk about robots that he makes with his dad. He's very proud of his work and enjoys sharing his robot creations with his class. So congratulations to you.
We have a presentation. As you know, we've been doing the enrichment program after school. Again, it's another one of those things that is funded by those COVID funds that are not here forever. But we have this presentation that Jessica and Jill are going to share with us. Actually, honestly, John and I walk around on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. It's amazing stuff that these kids did in both sessions. We enjoyed watching them. These kids are very enthusiastic. The teachers who are doing it are enthusiastic. It is a great vibe while they're doing these things. And the kids are like super motivated and pumped. One of the classes that we did have this semester, which I know they'll go over, is there was a cooking class in the home mech room. And it was very popular, and we had to put in two teachers, an aide, an assistant. And, um, and just about, I got a little smoky in there with nothing to set off the alarm. But one of the things is the elementary kids love cooking for Mr. Godfrey. And that was like the big to-do. It's like I would be sitting there talking to John about what's going on for the day. Knock, knock, knock at the door. The guy had a fajita. You had a sada, pancakes, omelets. Every five minutes, there was another one coming through the door. Have to work hard. We're too worried, so we're not going to answer that question.
Can't say no.
We'll be rolling the roll aids.
So Jill and Jessica, it's all yours. And if you need me, I'll just be your clicker.
Perfect. So thank you, thank you for giving us this opportunity to tell you a little bit about some of the things we've been excited about over the last couple of sessions. So for some of you, you may or may not have known, but we did have an enrichment program right before COVID where we had over twenty after-school programs offered to kids grades three through six. And it was a hit, I would say. So this year, we're here to talk to you a little bit about how the program went for 2022. And we did not do a full year of programs. We just actually did two sessions. So when you see some of the numbers, they are lower than the first program that we did in the previous year, but that's because we only had a shortened amount of time. So, and some of the pictures that you're going to see are of the kids and some of the artwork that they've created throughout the program. So session, sessions one and two by the numbers. So we offered fourteen programs in a short period of time. We had things from the arts to STEM to physical fitness. We had a hundred and forty-four students registered, which was a great turnout. I think Mr. Besson covered yours because we did exceed our limit of ten students per class in a few of those classes, but... Yes. So here's just some information about some of the programs and how we got started. Share that with you. So we started, session one ran from February through the middle of March. Session two, the middle of March, we picked right up, and our last session will be tomorrow, which will be pretty sad for some of them. Tuesdays and Thursdays, from two-thirty to three, the kids would go directly to the cafeteria where they were able to get a little bit of extra help with any homework or do some reading or math practice. And then at three o'clock, teachers and staff members who were leading the enrichment classes picked them up and were ready to go. That just kind of outlines what our sessions look like. We did start with a survey with staff and asked, "What are you interested in?" We knew what had worked well in the previous session, so we did have a little bit to work with there. And then we just kind of built upon that. A lot of work was done by the committee members. I really need to mention and give a shout out to Mrs. Bump, who wasn't able to be here tonight. She is great with organizing things and doing all of our flyers and things like that as well. So we would send out the flyers, giving a little blurb on what the program was about. Most of these things, as you can see, were free to students. A few of them did require a very minimal fee just to cover supplies. And then when we did the PIN pals, which Mrs. Boucher will talk about, we did negotiate something with Broadway Lanes, and it all worked out for the kids. Those went home. And then you can kind of see our timeline for things. And again, I would like to add that here is some artwork from our Art Factory class that is ending tomorrow, where they studied some modern artists and did their take on some different things. Amazing. And Mrs. Bump was leading that class, so there was really no downtime there. So session one, just some, here, here we go. Here are some candidates and things. I'll share with you some of the programs that we did in our first session. So we had the Just Dance Crew, which was led by Ashley and Mandy Godfrey. The kids absolutely loved this. It was a great way, and they didn't just make it up as they go. They were extremely organized, had Google Slides for each day, and had it very well planned out and did lots of different genres of dancing, and the kids had a great time. And I think their leaders did as well. I think Mr. Baffert and they get you to do a few dance ones or hand things. The next session is always a hit. We've had this in a couple, for a couple of years. It's board games. It's a great way to get the kids, you know, turning off the devices, coming in, cooperating, talking with each other, strategizing, and this is, this is always a hit. It's basically free. You know what I mean? You don't have any extra supply costs with this, and it's always tops the numbers for registration. We have, I think, twenty-two kids in this, in this group, three through six. And you can see Mr. Godfrey joined us several times for this as well. So that's Beyond Monopoly for session one. Brick Buddies, we had over in the high school where the kids went and used Lego challenges. This is a great STEM, you know, type of program, and the kids had a blast with this.
Who ran that one, Jess?
Mark over in the middle school. Yep, and I'll let Mrs. Boucher talk about PIN pals.
PIN pals was bowling up at the bowling alley, and the kids loved it. They got up there. They paid four dollars each time. But Mr. Chase, who did a lot of it, I just kind of helped out just organizing things. They had their, each kid had their own lane. They had their own ball. They had their, like, own everything, so like every time when they went in, their shoes were already there, their ball was there. They knew what lane they were going to, so they didn't have to, like, go every single time to go get the shoes. And like, it was all very well organized for them, and the kids would get like six games done, like, at least. And in the morning, when if I didn't stay the whole entire time, they would come and they would tell us how many strikes that they got. And they would be like super excited about it, so it was nice to see. And they, they did a good job. And the bus brought them up there, and then parents picked them up at the bowling alley because we didn't have transportation back, which didn't seem to be a problem.
Center Stage was for fifth and sixth graders. Mrs. Stark led this class. It was to kind of explore performing arts, and she did an amazing job with the small group that she had. They ended up doing like a little number from Seussical, a breakdown from the wardrobe to the singing to the acting. They had props that they had made and put together a little performance. So that was great to see these aspiring actresses in that group. Mrs. Bump led the Bob Ross Experience. If you take a look at some of the artwork that these kids came up with, it was amazing. And there were quite a few kids who joined that. I think she even might have had a few middle schoolers slip over into there. You know, it's a great outlet for some of these kids who might not be sports oriented to get a chance to do this. And it definitely helps with their social emotional learning as well.
It was a surprise in the number of middle schoolers that showed up.
Yes.
And they enjoyed it, and they were really into it.
Imagination Station, Mrs. Janir came up with some great seasonal crafts, and the kids absolutely loved it, especially around Valentine's Day. They came out with some really neat things. You know, woodworking she did to painting, to beading, and all sorts of things. She's very, very crafty there. Session two, we've got some, some different programs. We mixed it up a little bit. We definitely found that baking buddies is going to have to be on the list for next year as well. So here's a look at some of our Happy Feet Club friends.
I've done CSI with the third and the fourth graders. Oh, did we skip coding?
Just do the airbag. Airbag.
This is based off of an old science kit that I used to do for fourth grade. It used to be a, a one that I got through a Bosse's program, and I just had the pamphlet of it, so I knew what powders and crystals to use and what reactions were going to happen. So I had like inside information. But they thought it was hysterical, and we would talk about, like, they talked about the pH scale, trying to measure like in C, when you took BTB, if you mixed it in there, what the different things with colors that they would turn. They, of course, loved the baking soda with the vinegar because that would go all over. So that's always, that was always the hat. They did iodine and found with cornstarch, of course, that there was a reaction. And then we did, we didn't set off any alarms. But I did do a heat one the other day to see what happens when you burn the, each of the powders and crystals. And we were really worried, but it was okay. But they seemed to enjoy doing it, and then tomorrow's our last day, and I told them that they could just kind of play around and see what they wanted to do again. Always mentioning that you cannot mix whatever you want, wherever you want. You have to make sure that you have grown up with you and that we know what's going to happen when we do some of these experiments.
We had coding club. I want to give a special shout out to Vicki Plude and the Fort Ever Free Library. Vicki came in as a special guest for the first three sessions. She worked with Anne Marie Millidoo. This actually was a hit as well. They did some, they tried to do some Harry Potter wand coating in the beginning. And we also had three junior high, sixth grade is technically junior high, right? Junior high volunteers who came in on behalf of the library, which was another great layer that we can probably build upon for next year. And they did a great job with the coding club. So the kids had a blast with this, and I think that'll definitely be another one on our menu of offerings for next year. Happy Feet is another one we brought back from our first year. I am working with Stephanie Alucci on this one, and we're having, we had a blast. We started with setting a list of goals of what we wanted to accomplish. And it ran the gamut of everything from a certain amount of steps to get in, to walking a mile, to increasing our, their, their speed in running and going on a hike. And we did a scavenger hunt. We did a scavenger hunt inside and took a look at some of the nooks and crannies that they don't get to see here in the school, the behind the scenes of the drama.
They were very excited to see up here.
Yes, they didn't know. So we, we tried to come up with a Plan A for weather and a Plan B. But anyways, it was great team building. It was great for their social emotional learning. At the end, we always end each session with going around in a circle and talking about, like, giving somebody a compliment or what you surprised that you were able to accomplish. And in the beginning, we'd have a lot of passes, and then the last time we did it, somebody said, oh, we didn't even have anybody pass today. Everybody was sharing something positive. So those little milestones and things really kind of are meaning a lot to the kids.
Plus, one of your hikes became a community service event.
Yes, so I'll show you that slide. So one of the things they said is we went on the hike here down the back hill, and they noticed there was a lot of garbage on the trail. So Thursday, no, Tuesday last week, we did an Earth Day cleanup. And they got, you know, we used recycled bags and went around and then separated the bottles and cans and the garbage, and they just had a blast, so that was fun. So that's the Happy Feet Club. Oh, Bakery Buddies. Bakery Buddies was led by Ashley and Mandy Godfrey and also Sherri Janir. We did have to add a third person to that because we had a huge turnout for this, and we really didn't want to tell anybody no. But they did some measurement and math, and again, very well planned. They planned out each session. They even had to deal with, you know, if people had allergies and different things, they had to come up with alternatives for that. And so they did a great job, and I think the kids absolutely loved it.
Patrick Boucher is a professional English muffin pizza person, and we get those for dinner quite often now.
Am I going to get one for lunch now? It's a change, but what do you usually get?
So here they are in action. And then the Art Factory, again, Mrs. Bump led. I mean, just taking a look at the artwork, the Van Gogh where they took Starry Night and the Sunflower and kind of made a mixture of the two. They did an Andy Warhol project, and the kids really did a great job with that. So very creative, and they were very proud of their artwork. So just a quick special thanks. Thank you for letting us come and share with you some of the things that we're offering our students because, you know, that was quite a bit from, like I said, everything from STEM, arts, physical fitness, science. And so definitely the folks listed here, Mr. Godfrey, Mr. Besson, Mrs. Janir, and Miss H for holding down the fort down in the cafeteria with seventy, eighty, ninety kiddos down there. Joy Glass for making sure we have our snacks. Vicki and the Fort Ever Free Library for volunteering to come in for coding. And then our middle school volunteers, the custodial staff for working with us because those classrooms are being utilized. They had to redo their schedule of cleaning up and things like that. And all of our talented enrichment crew, students, and families. So thank you.
Walking home today, Jessica Milam said, "I'm so very sad. Tomorrow is my last Happy Feet."
No, but he doesn't leave everyone. And he was so happy that he got six times around the track that one day that he was supposed to only get one mile. And I was like, he came in and he would say, he would say, "I went around six times."
In the rain. It was raining that day.
I was very proud of that.
Just that Recreation Foundation really laid a groundwork. Good thing you had that.
I could have brought dessert or dinner tonight.
We're going to move on to reports. Finance committee back this evening. Anyone want to speak up? Just a quick summary?
We didn't really go over much. Standard wasn't a lot of change from the previous. We looked at a forecast to see what the budget's going to look like. We did find out we had to add a little bit to our expenses, so I think we shifted from, we had three-hundred-seventy-seven thousand. We were going for the general fund. We're up to four-hundred-two thousand. Not too bad, just to cover the expenses at the end of the year, but changes are pretty stable from, or no changes, so we're pretty stable.
Grievance, negotiations at March. There's another meeting, I believe, tomorrow or March, yeah? And the rest, policy meeting at March as well. Is there not a policy meeting or what?
I think we're square.
Superintendent's report.
Basically, I have information about budgets, a couple of things. Sherri, is there anything you want to cover before I go into the slideshow that I prepared?
No.
So we're good with my slideshow? All right. All right.
Need to click for it?
So basically, this is more updated on some of the information that we did last month on budget recommendation, and some of the changes were already covered by James. So basically, that's unchanged from last month. It's eleven million dollars, seven-hundred-seventy-nine thousand dollar budget. We're going to present it to the taxpayers in May at the budget vote. The proposed budget maintains current district programs, basically paid for by the district, the positions and everything else. It does include an additional clerical position that we discussed, Superintendent Secretary for next year, and a teacher's aide or assistant shared between the main office and the health office. Okay, because we, it's a dire area that needs support, both of those places. The two other positions that you saw there, the Director of People's Services and the Social Worker, are only covered by the federal grants through 2024. So they're not, they're funded through the grants, and they'll be online through 2024. If these individuals do the work and the job that we believe they're capable of, they will probably save us some money on the kids that leave the district because the social worker could do some of the things that we can't do in the house now, and they'll probably start to pay for themselves. But if not, those positions are what they are. Five-year plan. We always talk about five-year plans. This year's budget is, is a short, in-your-face, one-year budget. Some of the things that we probably should have done, we're not doing, and it has to do with the inflation that's going on in the country, as well as the fact that the community's going through a reassessment, which we'll address. So the five-year plan, we need to start thinking, three years our federal grants run out, and two more years our federal grants run out. We do know that there's a pilot coming in. One of the things about the pilot is it is split in half, so some money can go directly to reserves, which is, which is a boon for the district. But the other one hundred thousand dollars isn't like we get a hundred thousand dollars added to the levy. It's just one hundred dollars that supplies other money in the levy. So be careful when people start telling you, hey, you just got this new pilot, you should have more money. What happens is it goes into the total bundle of the work to the community, and it works against us. So in the year that we do get the pilot, you might even see a tax, a negative tax increase because those are the way the pilots work, because there's more money being added to the base. When a budget fails, programs and services often have to be cut. And we're hoping that after we get to the rigmarole of the settling of the assessments to the community could truly understand what their rates are, what a levy would entail, and how much it would really cost them. We're hoping that the community who came out to support saving the school will come out next May and really save the school. May twenty twenty-three. State aid, foundation aid is the important one that we always look at. The rest of these things that we see, they go up, they go down. It's based on use. They're, they're based on numbers. They're based on a few other things. So that's where things flow, but the real money that helps run the school is foundation aid and the tax levy. Capital aid, we get aid on capital projects, as we talked, and we start to plan. We know that in 2024, one of the bonds will become due. And in 2025, we better be ready to kick up and not just, we don't like drop our level of, of the capital reserve coming through or the capital aid coming through and then have to do a major increase to the community a few years later to get back into it. We do have Garrett Hamlin coming in later this month, so you can talk about some of the things that weren't done on the last five-year plan and then start to discuss where we are in the requirements to do a five-year plan, so we get that kicked off and started. As you can see, 2020, they refunded a one-point-nine million dollar buck. As you can see, 2020, they refunded a one point nine million dollar bond, and we have a 2020 bond of this much money that's gonna be coming due. So this is monies that we're technically short each year. And if you look, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year is four hundred and two thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. And when you look in your budget forecast that was presented by Charlene to you guys by email, the budget forecast shows that we're gonna be using four hundred two dollars, four hundred two thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars in fund balance to cover that gap. It's not sustainable. We need to start planning for the future and what we're gonna do. Like, again, this year was a little, next year, we're looking at possibly a four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollar shortage. The year after that jumps to six sixty-one, and by twenty-five, twenty-six, the number, if we don't do a few things differently, it's gonna jump to eight hundred eighty-five thousand plus dollars. And this is just going forward. This is with the personnel that we have, with the things that we do know. And that's assuming the two percent tax cap says they were projected out that we could do, as well as protecting that the state aid keeps coming back to us in the foundation aid, which is current at about two percent safely a year. This year, we were very fortunate. As those of us who've been doing this for a long time know, this is an election year. In election years, the governor is very generous. In election years, the legislator is very generous. We got three percent. When we originally did this for you back in September, we were only anticipating two percent. So we got an extra percent, which we're very excited about. But next year, is she gonna knock us to one? Or whoever the governor is, knock us to one? Or are they gonna maintain a two or keep up with the three? Knowing that inflation and some of the things that are going on in our economy, as well as our school districts and our children's needs require more. There's also a look of foundation aid. How could foundation aid be looked at differently? And that's, as you can see, how it took them to settle the budget on a few little items. That's gonna be a long process. If you remember, those are things that were cut because we did have a contingency budget. And that's the worst thing, you know? These contingency budgets now only hurt, they hurt for many years to come. To get back those transportation services, which people have asked for, is close to impossible unless there's a major tax infringement. So looking at this compared to the requested budget, budget increase of the, that's our proposed budget, is the increase is six point fifteen percent. That's for us to operate from year to year. And technically, the increased foundation aid was one hundred fifty-eight. As you can see, it doesn't add up. Three percent, we went up six point five. Our tax levy amounts to sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars, spread across the taxpayers of Fort Edward. The gap between the proposed budget and revenues is four hundred and two thousand dollars. And that gap is being filled, as you can see here, by the fund balance to close the gap. We are using in this budget two hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars, and that's funding approximately nine positions, two of which we mentioned earlier. So those monies, how do we, the other way to save money instead of not burning fund balance is you're gonna need to cut positions for the gap. Not recommending it this year. Cut programs and services to close the gap. Those are gonna be the alternatives a couple of years down the road, unless we could right the ship in different ways. So the reason I'm telling you this today is because it would be very easy for me not to tell you this and leave here in June, la, la, la. But I don't want to leave the next person holding this and then them to shock you next year. So I'm telling you this now, so when the next person tells you this, you're not saying, oh, my God, this is the first we heard of it. You're crazy. No, you know. Of course, these are things we have to worry about. There's emerging trends, there are inflation, we have negotiations. Negotiations now include raises, but it's how do we recruit and retain people? Health insurance and OPEP costs are always out of our control. We do the best that we can to control them through the programs and through our consortium and working with the companies, the benefits, and all those other people that are part of our consortium and service. Utilities, electric goes up in my house, it goes up at the school. Gas costs go up in my house, guess what? They go up at the school. And this is a big building, a lot of square feet. Interest rates, they affect us when we go out to get bonds. They affect us when we go out to borrow money for buses, this, that, and the other thing. They also help us too if we do a few things with our money by doing budget transfers where we can make a little interest on the money that we have in the bank by just moving, you know, budget transfer pretty much each payable. There was a way to do that back in the day when the rates were really high. Debt service, how do you manage that? You don't want debt service to just go away. You want to manage it that it sort of dovetails one debt service to the other so it doesn't affect the tax rate or the taxpayer. Construction, those costs are gonna up. Supplies and materials are going up. All these things are going up because of supply chain issues and inflation. So those are the things we deal with. Supply chain issue, I'll give you a perfect example. We're trying to use our state-aided library aid. And we have those funds, and we need to expend them before July one. So we reached out to the person that provides the books for school libraries. Well, guess what? They don't have all the books that we ordered. So Amber B. is back on the job trying to make sure that we get all of those books in before July first, or we lose that state aid. They haven't told us that, hey, you know what? We realize there's supply chain issues. If you get this filled by August thirty-first, you're good to go? No, we have to do that. That's money given to us by the state that we have to use it or lose it. We also just went through a thing today with the Apple company on iPads, making sure that those iPads come through before June first. I mean, June thirty, I count June first, but June thirty, because we want to make sure we don't lose those funds either. A best practice for us on those state-aided lines is spend that money as soon as you can in July, August, September, and then don't spend our money that was in the budget lines. That's just an old practice. Changing demographics, the impact of the pandemic on students. We know there's academic challenges, not just in Fort Edward, statewide. Social, emotional needs, family support still need to be done. Hence, the social worker, that's gonna be a big help. Because social workers are allowed to make home visits and do more in the community. Demographic shifts, our students with disabilities, our economically challenged. There is a good number of single-parent families in our district. Again, they need those supports. Again, that's a big role for the social worker, helping us to help people, help improve our attendance. Most of our attendance issue are single-parent family issues where nobody's home, mom goes to work, leaves junior behind, junior goes back to sleep. You know, that's an attendance issue. So there's things that we need to do to help those parents that need some help. Staffing shortages, we've gone through some staffing shortages. John and I just went to a job fair, and we were pretty psyched because we put down things like custodians, bus drivers, and everything else. And guess what? We already have two custodians in the works getting their fingerprints done. And we also have a possible bus driver mechanic in the works. So we're pretty excited. And we also found possibly a health teacher. So we're really happy that we went to that the other night. But we're competing, we're competing with other people. So, you know, as soon as those people said they were interested, we called them the next day. We're gonna lock them down. And certain subject areas are hard. Earth science, every day, I don't know about you, John, but my list serves. It's always who has an earth science teacher? Who has a psychologist? Who has a health teacher? Who has an elementary principal? I mean, they're just, it's constant. So the budget, this year, we're planning for this year, but I'm trying to put some ideas on your radar for the future, three to five years out. Right now, we're probably in the mode that we have to think three years out. Once we get that under our belts, then start planning on that five-year out. You have a good, we have a good budget team, a business team here with Charlene, Greg, and Charles. I've been very excited over the last month, working with all three of them. We've got a lot of work done. We have to identify what's changing in the district. What are the goals of the district? I know we have our strategic plan. You're getting a new superintendent, we have a relatively new board. But guess what? This summer, enjoy this room. I can see a retreat here with you and your new superintendent because that's the kind of stuff that kids done in the summer so that when the teachers come back for superintendent's day on the first day, they get a good idea of what the goals are for the next year, two, maybe three years. So they can plan. But they also have to build on the successes of this year. You don't like come in and drop the wonders program and things like that. So there's information that needs to be done. That's all part of your strategic plan. What resources do our children in the school need to succeed? I mean, we've done a lot with technology, but that's a fleet. And you gotta look at our technology. We brought a lot of Chromebooks. Sad part is we brought them all in one year, which now makes you worry about them all going bad in one year. In a perfect plan, you would have brought twenty percent of your fleet, and then twenty more percent of your fleet, and then twenty more, and then have a five-year rotation because that's pretty much the life cycle of these, you know, PC-type computers. But we're gonna need to start planning, and I've been working with Jason on, how do we start restoring some sort of a plan so that we can have a fleet exchange? Prepare revenue and expense assumptions and share them often. You know, we're talking about this now, we're gonna have a budget in May. You're gonna go back into the community, and we're gonna start talking about graduation. Then we're gonna talk about the farmer's market. Then we're gonna talk about the Lock Fest. But guess what? This is the stuff you gotta talk to with your neighbors. Until they finally see you and they start running, then you know that they might have heard you on some of these issues that you have to share. But you're the spokespeople, you're the spokespeople. Anyone who's a part of this community has to get educated and share this information with others. And who are our decision-makers in our community? Those are your leaders, those are those, you know, they don't have a title, but guess what? They're influencers. Who are the influences in this community that we can get to, to bring them in under the tent, show them what we know, and hopefully teach them so they can go out and share their information with others? So we gotta look for those people. Forecasting, we talked about this the last time, all those associations, multi-year tax cap forecast, which Charlene provided us. Changes to foundation aid, which we know we have to consider, we talked about that earlier. How to maximize our expense-based aids, going for any grants that are legitimate. You know, sometimes you hear about a grant, wow, that's a great grant. We'll give you ten thousand dollars, but that's after you spend eighty thousand dollars. Those aren't the great grants. You want the grants that don't require us to invest more of our money into something that costs more than what we're getting. And then there's investments. How do we start investing our money as we get it in at tax time so that maybe we can earn some interest or have some short-term CD bonds, knowing that the cash flow of this period, guess what? We're gonna catch these six-month CDs in in February, which is gonna fund the district from February, March, April, May, June. But maybe we were able to leverage a little bit more interest. There were days that we did those things. Those things when interest rates were high. Those days might be coming back. That's the kinds of things we did in the nineties. Debt service schedules, contracts, fleet maintenance, we just talked about. Then the enrollment projections and demographic changes. All things that need to be in the forefront. So strategic uses of our COVID funds. We've been doing things like the HPAC for the library, we're talking about a BOATC. We're talking about things that were high-expense things that, hey, guess what? We got this money, let's take advantage of it. It's one time, we don't have to go to the taxpayers and float a capital bond, borrow money, burn the fund balance. So that's been an advantage. Non-strategic is for your recurring expenses. So temporary programs to offset learning loss was our enrichment in our summer school. Those are wonderful programs, they're being funded by this. Somewhere down the road, you know, hopefully, it's something that could be integrated into the regular budget, but right now, it's funded by federal programs. Even, and we'll talk to you later about it, summer school, which is where you're gonna be voting on the DCEP so that we could apply for fifty thousand dollars for us to have a summer school program to offset learning loss. Last year, we ran the program at eighty thousand dollars. This year's grant is only fifty thousand dollars. So we already know that that's gonna reduce the impact that we had from last year. The non-strategic is the stuff that we just talked about. Two hundred ninety-five, four hundred seventy thousand for those nine positions. We're gonna need to start finding the money to keep those nine positions, or some of those nine positions are gonna go bye-bye after twenty-three, twenty-four. We anticipate using over four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four at this time for personnel. Anticipate, doesn't mean that that doesn't change. But we're trying to put that money there for the bad year. If things go better, that money could then be moved over to buy strategic one-time purchases, which is better for the district. But we have that money there earmarked just as a buffer, you know, so we don't end up losing things in twenty-three, twenty-four. Reserves in the fund balance, using fund balance and reserves is a short-term fix, not sustainable. So we just, you know, we're using, right now, we're anticipating using four hundred and two thousand. Reason I say anticipated is if things get good next year, we do a few, you know, tighten the bell, you know, hold the purse strings a little tighter. And in four hundred and two, if we spend three fifty, we didn't spend fifty thousand of that fund balance. So it reduces it. But we can spend up to four hundred and two thousand just to keep the gap closed. Unassigned fund balance is limited to four percent established reserves. In today's board meeting, you will see there's a proposition for us to establish a transportation and maintenance capital project, capital equipment reserve. Right now, also on this agenda is a transportation request to lease a school bus. Would have been far better if we didn't have to go through a bond agent to get these things. If we paid for them with straight cash, we would be saving that interest. You know, we do get eight back on it, but we could have been saving some money. And the other thing is, you know, we're looking at possibly your next purchase in five years. Should actually be a purchase and not a lease. So there's things, but that's where you have Greg and Charles in the future will be explaining those things to you. And as you do, I watch the finance committee do it. You do a very nice and thorough job monitoring fund balances, revenues, budget transfers. Some of you guys got, you know, should have been accountants, but good eyes. Pick up on a lot of things. So foundation aid, three percent. Yeah, you're one of them. The foundation is three percent. Granted, election year, how much can the state sustain doing three percent or more? They have declining enrollment, which also affects our per capita, meaning as your enrollment drops, the amount of money per student drops, which means our foundation aid may not go up as much as we would like it to do. And the CPI, C seven point eight is crossed out? That was three weeks ago. It's now at seven point nine today. So it's still going up. And the tax cap is the other thing. It's a formula that is based on exemptions and inclusions. And that's why you need to understand how that math works. So when somebody comes to you and says, hey, look at they're putting in the old GE de-watering site, and they're having a pilot. Great. All it does is it will lower the rate, it doesn't help our levy. Lowers the rate, doesn't help our levy. Doesn't help us. It's not like found money. People don't, it's a disassociation. Our levies are levy, it's controlled by laws. It could grow by two percent, it could even shrink based on something like a pilot coming through. So the pilot will serve plan a hundred thousand dollars that we receive. It doesn't get added to. Now, a good community will say, oh, well, we don't want to go negative. Let's just take that one hundred thousand dollars, move forward, and we'll take a two-point-five percent rate. It'll bust the cap, but technically, we're at zero. But like I said, that's, or even just to get a zero percent increase, they would have to bust the cap on a negative year when a pilot comes in. But you'll see that in two years. So just be ready for it. Start getting to workshops or finding out from people like your business office, Rick Timms, NISBA, how those things work so you could communicate it to your community. And like I said, it's all about communication. We want the community input. Someone asked if I'd be willing to meet with people to discuss the assessments and how that has affected them. and how that has affected them, which is the next slideshow. Love to, send the people in. We'll set up coffees, anything. We, we wanna have those conversations, we wanna talk to people. And make sure we tell the communications to Fort Ewer. That's key too, you know? We don't need to have a conversation about other districts. The district we're representing, the district we care about, the district we're trying to make good things happen to is Fort Ewer. So just because something happens fifty miles down the road in Shenandoah means nothing to us. Maybe if it happens next door in a district like Hartford or our guy, which are a little bit more similar to us, we could talk about it, or Johnsburg or something. But Hudson Falls is another animal, South Plains Falls is another animal. Let's tell our conversations and how those things affect us in Fort Ewer. So that's pretty much the budget presentation. We saw the amount we're looking for, and we know what we have to do for the future. Any questions? Go back to any slide or? Alright, so we have another fun-filled slideshow.
Feel like you're back in school?
Closest I get to teaching, right? So, this one is the fun one. This one. Alright, so, we all know that Fort Ewer is still undergoing a reassessment. It's not done. It's a, it's a reassessment in flux. So because of that, basically when we start filling out our tax rate report card that we file, we can only use last year's wealth that was identified in the district, which was at seventy-three percent of what the state calls true value. So watch how this scenario plays out. And, and please ask questions, because this is the time. So they did a full reassessment of properties. And those have to be done more often than every ten or so years. And while the assessment portion is complete, there are other steps need to be finalized. There's gonna be grievance day. Then there's gonna be a reassessment of the total value of the community. Then there's gonna possibly be things like tax search areas that you have to start planning for. And maybe we even have to put some of their money, even though the taxes come in into reserve. There's a whole bunch of things that are gonna happen that we can't get totally into the weeds on right now. But whatever the assessed value is, the commu- the, the assessors came up with one. But we know that that number's gonna go south. But what we did is at this time for this scenario, we know that with an equalization rate of seventy-three percent, what we're gonna do is base some of this information on what our one-hundred percent assessment was by the state. Which is less than what the assessors assessed this whole community at. So whatever numbers I give you could be better, but really shouldn't be any worse than this. But the sad part is this won't be settled until after the budget vote. So like, many community members need to get the right information on this, and we'll post in this tomorrow. So, we only have the tax jurisdiction of the village, which makes things simple. It's not that confusing. And Fort Ewer's been a single jurisdiction district, but they're, they're, they have an update. And the reassessment, when done, has to be done with fidelity. That's why all these next steps are going into place. The fidelity piece is still being tweaked out by the village and different, different parties. So the process is to finalize the true wealth of the district, right? Prior to this, it was one hundred and twenty-seven million. We're required to complete the tax rate form, but we had to use last year's numbers. So if you use, look at the tax rate form, and you were to look at your new house assessment, you probably would have a stroke, because they don't match. So the, the last year's tax rate form comes to about twenty-eight dollars. And that's not even close. The other misnomer is that people think that we get to keep that money, but, but it doesn't exist. The problem is that they'll see the old tax rate and apply it to their new assessments. And like I said, that's gonna blow people's minds. And that's the last thing we want them to do. So there's gonna be major confusion. Since they were not done over a long period of time, some of those jumps are pretty big based on the assessment. There's also a misnomer that as assessments go up, the taxing entities receive more due to the reassessment. This is not true. Again, it's the lev- remember we showed you that three point four-five, you know, three hundred forty-five, three million four hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars? See? I don't care how wealthy the district gets, that's all we're entitled to get on a two percent tax levy increase. No more, no more. If, if what these people believe is true, believe me, we would not be having a conversation about three years from now being short. We'd be swimming in it. But it's not true. It's the levy. The levy does not change. The rates change. What you pay for your share might change, but the district receives not one dime more. All this coming from this community, no matter how it shakes out, regardless of the rate, regardless of your wealth, of your property, or next-door neighbor's property, the district is only increasing their budget by like sixty-seven thousand dollars. That's two percent of our tax levy. We're not getting any more than that. So the, here's the urban legend. It's an urban legend, that's what's going on out there. If the community value increased to full value of the calculation worksheet and the district maintained, which it cannot do, the rate of twenty-eight dollars per thousand, so on that worksheet, full value for our community was a hundred and sixty-six million dollars. Well, guess what? If it became one hundred and sixty-six million, which we know it's not, we would have collected four million, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars this year. We're not, that's one point two million dollars more than we're gonna receive. The rates may change. What you pay may change, it does not affect what the district receives. The district is still gonna get the three, three, three point five. That we talked about on the last. Three point four and five nine, that's all. This is what people think we're gonna get with the new rate? This is what we're gonna get, same old, same old, nothing new. So we have to stop this urban legend that's out there. First of all, the rate's not gonna be that big. So, in fact, if we take the full value of August, which was like a hundred and sixty-six million, the tax rate would drop from twenty-eight fifty-three to twenty dollars and eighty-three cents. So right away, just using an old one-hundred percent levy number, it drops to twenty dollars. But we already know that the value that the assessors came up with is more than that formula that the state put out to try equalization. And it came in at more, so technically, our rate will be lower than twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents after the dust settles. How much lower, I can't tell you. You know, I could guess, and that's not fair. But we do know, worst-case scenario is twenty dollars and eighty-three cents per thousand. If, if everyone who goes on grievance day wins their grievances, and the, and the town comes out to a hundred and sixty-six million dollars, which isn't gonna happen, so. So I'm, I'm estimating it's gonna drop below twenty. How much, I don't know. Penny, a dollar, who knows? There is a misnomer that as the assessments go up, the taxing entities will receive more. We just talked about that up here. Due to reassessments, it's not true, as we are budgeted on a levy, we keep repeating it. The levy, we are budgeted on levy. We don't set rates, we don't set assessments. And we're restricted by state regulations as well as tax for any growth. So we can't grow more than three million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars. No matter what the community is worth, or how many pilots come in, or how many other things happen in this community. The only thing those things affect is the rate that everyone pays their share on. The district is seeking a levy of this much, that I repeated multiple times, two hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-one dollars, from a community, from the community which is a two percent increase of the prior year's levy, or sixty-seven thousand dollars. We will not be receiving a one-fold, as been, as been rumored in the community. Yeah?
Can, um, can I ask a couple questions? Do you want me to wait till the end of the slideshow?
No, no.
Okay. You have just made a comment not too long ago here that we don't, we don't set assessments. I think some of us had also heard in the community that some people felt that we as a school had requested this reassessment and things to occur.
No, that's-
And I, I want to just say that publicly, that this, it's not a school thing.
No.
And that this reassessment occurred in various, um, communities in Washington.
In Washington County?
Yes.
I actually wanted mine to go way up.
So I wanted to just make that statement, because I think that was something that some people had heard as well, that we asked for this, we wanted this to happen, and it's not anything that has to do with us.
No, if, if anyone probably lit this up a little bit, it might have been the state comptroller's office. Because they're, they're looking at these formulas, or looking at all these towns and villages, and their formula is only so good. And when you have so many towns with, with rates that weren't redone, some towns that were doing it for two years, and some that didn't do it for ten, and I know there was one town way down in the bottom of Washington County. I think it was Easton at one time, that was sort of like on a forty percent evaluation, because they hadn't done it in so long a time. And they, I think they, they were forced to eventually do it. So, the comptroller lots of times comes into the county and starts saying, what's going on here? So no, the school district has nothing to do with this, it's not our bailiwick. We're just, just like the taxpayers, we're passive riders in the storm. I mean, that's, that's all we are. And then we, and unfortunately, we have to adjust from that, because unfortunately, we're the entity that people do vote on their budget. And when people are upset, we're the only one that they can take it out on. And, and hopefully, if they don't like our budget and what we're doing, they've all known. But, if they understand what we're really up to and what we're trying to do for the children, I would hope that they understand that all of this minutia that's out there and misinformation has nothing to do, and we need to support the school district so that the children in Fort Ewer get the services and programs that they need. Which the community said that they wanted in September and October.
And I think Mark, you were the person who gave me an analogy that really made a lot of sense to me. If we look at that sixty-seven thousand dollars as an empty pool, and that the, the taxpayers each have an amount of water that they're going to be dumping into that pool. It's those reassessments that are going to determine how much each person is dumping it. And, that, that, that amount of water that goes to fill that pool in the end, that doesn't change.
Right.
Just who is adding in what, and who has added in, in years past and, and whatnot.
I have a little slide on that, but you're right, once the pool's full, we can't overfill it. It's limited.
Unless we go over the two percent.
Unless we go over the two percent.
With a higher wall.
Right, and then, and if all of a sudden the community says, hey, make your pool deeper, then we could do that, but we need sixty percent of the community to do that.
Thank you.
So remember, we're talking about tax rates. That's, that's out in the community. The tax levy, that's the school district, with the limitations as done by legislature. Assessment, the amount of property is valued by the assessor, not the school district, not. It's the assessor. Three different things. So here's, here's what happened, if you remember, I gave like three scenarios way back in, I think July or August or whatever. So here's that little district of three people, let's call it like a water district or something like that, something that's pretty benign. House A is assessed at two hundred thousand dollars, House B was assessed at a hundred thousand, House C, three hundred thousand. The assessor, the assessor has not been at the, done a full assessment in a long period of time. Some of the homes, maybe in over a decade. Others are taxed closer to their more recent purchase price, which is what you usually see in these communities, like when I was in another community, that's what was very noticeable. So House A is now assessed at two hundred sixty thousand, so your house went up sixty thousand. This guy, he went up eighty thousand. And this guy probably brought his house last, he went up about three hundred and ten, or just added two. So how does that change things? In the original assessment, at twenty dollars per thousand, that was the rate, to get the money needed, this district needs ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars a year to operate. And that's how the twelve thousand dollars was split up, based on the homes, based on the twenty-dollar value. So, the total assessed value of the community is six hundred thousand dollars. Therefore, the set, the tax rate becomes twenty dollars per thousand. So that's how rates are set. Basically, what does, what's, what's the levy? In this case, levy's right here, twelve thousand dollars. And the levy goes up against the value of the properties. So now things changed. And this property now goes to two fifty. But guess what? When we look at it, all of the properties together now cost seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. The community went up a hundred fifty thousand dollars in value. But, we, the entity, the, whether it's the water station or the school, has not increased their twelve thousand dollars. They kept their budget flat. So even though they kept their budget flat, what ends up happening is the profit, the tax rate drops, has nothing again to do with the taxing entity. It drops to sixteen dollars, because there's more wealth in the community. It only affects the rate, it doesn't affect the levy. But if you look at this, now House A is still paying four thousand dollars, even though they increased by fifty thousand. House B, who increased by eighty thousand, is now paying twenty-eight eighty instead of the two thousand they used to pay. And House C has actually had their taxes dropped. They were overpaying. And it just works out, because they did the formula, be the same eight eighty. You know, because there's only three houses. And, so there, there's the new rates. So House A, their tax levy remained about the same. House B went up, eight eighty, House C dropped about eight eighty. But notice, there was no change in the levy. There was no change for the school district, the water district, whatever this was. It didn't change. The only thing that changed was the rate, because there was more wealth against what was the levy. And the other thing that changed was who was paying a different share based on newer assessments that were more current for twenty twenty-two. So homeowner A, eh, he's happy, he's like, hey, same, same old, same old, I don't even have to change my S-R-O. Homeowner C, they are anxious. They think with this new assessment coming through, they don't even know it's dropping to sixteen dollars. Forget about the fact that they're paying eight, eight sixty, I think it was. They, they're, they're worried that it's gonna be more. Homeowner, so homeowner B is anxious, but in reality, they were underpaying for years. Homeowner C was picking up their share. And, by having, and homeowner C, when they saw their original assessment, was like, oh my gosh, are you kidding me? That's the guy that had the highest-paid house? He was like, are you kidding me, more? And in actuality, his, his rate was cut. So by having more current and annual assessments, these things change less. So if they were doing this every two years, guess what? This would be benign. If they were doing this every year, it would be really benign. Because rates would go pretty similar to everyone else. But when you do it once every ten or twelve years, it's gonna be shockers for some people. So if we look at this on a chart, and this is the nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and here's the total. Homeowner A, hey, stayed about the same, no difference for them, life's good. Homeowner V was the one that was over-assessed, under-assessed, and their new levy went up. Their old levy was two thousand, and now it's eighty, they were not paying eight hundred and eighty dollars, which would have been their fair share in the past one, two, let's just say three years, let's not go back ten or twelve. But guess what, they're technically two thousand six hundred and forty dollars ahead. Because they've been underpaying. While this poor person in House C, who even though, he's really happy, he saw his rate drop. But in actuality, over the last three years, he paid for homeowner B's share and overspent two thousand six hundred and forty dollars had there been reassessments every year. So that's how the assessments make it fair for all the people in the district. It doesn't provide any extra revenues to the tax entity, whether it be the school, the village, the town. They get no more money. It just changes your rate, and it changes that, and ensures that everyone, supposedly if the- It just changes your rate and it changes that, and ensures that everyone, supposedly if the assessments are done right, is paying their fair share for the true value of their homes. So each year, we ask for support on the tax levy and basically whatever numbers are running around, we don't know what the tax rate is. As I said in the other slide, I'm estimating worst case scenario, drops to twenty dollars and change. My belief is it's going to drop further than that even after grievance day and everything else. But that gets set in August after our vote. So like I said, there's misinformation out there, miscommunications and misunderstandings. And that's why I'm saying, any chance we get to get somebody to look at our slides, come in and see me, I'll sit down with them with their tax forms, I'll try to explain things to them. That's what we're here for. But it does not change our levy, district doesn't get one dime more than it would have. And depending on how far off the mark, tax rates rise or fall, the levy amount, the entities. And, and just imagine, if you were in a district that we were three different towns feeding it, or three different towns. Those, those were horrible, that's why a lot of districts are getting it done every year or every two years in sync. Because when I was living in the district I live in, every, they did it like every four years or so. And one year I'm paying more than the next, and I'm telling my bank, why don't you just keep it, keep it there? Because in two years, my town's going to come back and get the money and at least it'll be there in escrow. And you don't have to raise it on me again. But the bank's like, no, we can't do that, we're lowering your monthly rate. Then, no, two years later, guess what, it's going to go up again. But being in one, one tax entity is awesome. And then when the school districts, that was one thing they did do, they did ask assessors if they could do, you know, those types of districts together. So they, you know, so maybe Queensberry did the houses that might have been in the Lake George district one year, then did the Queensberry school district the other year. So they were doing it like every two years, they coordinated with the village of Lake George, the town of Lake George, parts of Warrensburg, parts of Haddon. So that way, those houses were pretty much assessed at the same time to stop some of this madness that used to go on. So when voting on the school budget, remember you're voting on the contribution, which is like I said, you fill in that pool that we agreed to. It's not anything else other than what does the community want for their children. That should be it. Any other questions, clarifications?
Really thorough, man, it's really idle. Everyone needs to see this.
Makes sense.
I think the biggest thing when we put out the, the tax rate, I feel like is what people most often latch on to. How much per thousand am I going to be paying?
Right.
And I feel like that is the most widely talked about.
It is, and I think the misconception of the school getting more than the levy.
Than allowed for the levy unless we, of course, go over that two percent.
And, and like Mark said, if we didn't wait ten years or twelve years to do it, it wouldn't be as painful.
I think the biggest thing you're going to have to drive home to them is that they're, what they got in the mail, that's not taking place, that's not affecting this year's budget.
Right.
And because people are already freaking out about that number, like, it's already been out there and we've already tried to talk quite a few number of people down, like, this isn't going to be the actual number. You know what I mean, this isn't, this isn't the percent that you're going to be paying on this, it's going to go down. Like, it just kind of needs just letting this all play out because it's not well done yet. But.
This type of thing is, is not, they can't just look at the highlights, they got to read and understand the whole thing.
So Mark, even though it's going to be a record grievance day this year, there's no doubt about it, they still have to publish the rate in August.
In August, right, so in August, you're going to set the rate like you do every August. Charlene, Greg, your F E H team will have got the latest and greatest once the budget's set. And then they'll run this formula and they'll tell you straight out what the, what the rate is. It doesn't get us any more money, doesn't get us any less money.
No, the grid's going to be important.
But, but what happens is it then is all set relative to where your house sits in the community to every other piece of property you can afford ever. And that's, and that's.
I think the village needs to, needs to look at this and do more tightly inaccurate assessments.
That's out of our hands, but I think, I think the bottom line here is, people need to look.
This year, what they're going to pay is two percent more than they paid last year, period. Most people don't know what the rate or don't know or don't care, the levy means nothing, what means to them is what comes out of their pocket. Two percent more than last year, that's what this is, which should be easily sellable. So when you start, that was twenty-eight fifty-three, now it could be twenty-two eighty-three. No one's going to stand, two percent more than you paid last year is what you're paying this year, period.
And if they keep asking me questions that I can't answer, I'm going to be deferring to Mr. Besson to say, please give him a call or I'll have him call you and he can sit down with you with that assessment information and chat with you.
The other thing is that when they did send that, those tax forms, the little assessment forms out, they give you a number at the bottom, some people saw that in actuality, they're going to be paying less next year if everything was the same as twenty twenty-two and twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Some people saw they were going to be paying more. And that total bottom line is not just the school district, it also included the town and the village.
Not the village.
So, you know, if you see, so, so if you see a tax increase of like, where they said you're going to pay five hundred dollars more, again, you're getting five hundred dollars saved over a number of years. But that five hundred dollars isn't all the school, some of it's the school, some of it's the village, some of it's the town, some of it's the county. Some people will see that they're under five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars lower. Well, guess what, they're not going to see a big change, as James pointed out on the tax levy, because we are two percent, maybe they break even in what their actual out-of-pocket expenses. But you know what, some of that money also is the savings in the county and in the village and in the county, you know, all those entities. Fire districts, libraries, all those things, they all come into play. So what happens is when people see that bottom line, they're all saying, school district, school district, school district. And if you read that chart, it's actually more entities than the school district in here. But we're the only one they could vote on, so we're the only one that they're talking about.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Why is that?
I mean, I feel like either vote on all or vote on none, why is, is that in New York State?
It's in New York State.
In case of New York State, there's nothing we can handle here, so.
No, I know, but it is.
Before we get bigger things better.
It is. Either vote on all or vote on none.
But that's coming back to.
Because that's where they take it out, like you said, like if everything else is going up, well, I can only have a say on this one, so I'm going to say no. Because I can't say no to these, like, that's not, that, that puts the onus on the district, but, but you know what I mean, that's not.
In that way, it's going to.
It seems.
I've been yelling about that for a while, is that never going to change.
But we had a governor who had a plan to change all that, it would have been fifty-one school districts.
Yeah, they want to just.
Yeah.
Yep.
Countywide.
Yeah.
You'd like living back in the sound.
Yeah. Any other questions?
But the governor's gone, so we don't.
Great slideshow, Mark, very good.
Anything else?
No, that was it for my.
I just have a question, and maybe I missed something, but typically around this time of year, we start discussing graduation, what day it's going to take place. I believe everyone wants it to be outside again, along all those things, but I think we have to start having that conversation. There's always a consideration for what's going on in the village, you don't have a date yet, right?
Yeah, we do, Friday, I believe it's the twenty-fourth.
They don't like it.
Friday, Friday's the twenty-fourth, that's.
They should drumming.
And, and it's going to be outdoors.
Well, it might.
The class advisor over there.
The kids really don't want to have it out loud.
They go.
No.
It's too noisy.
It's too noisy and it's hot, they're always stuck in the sun, everybody else is in the shade.
Works for me.
Um, if you would like, I can, you know, have them write something up and come and talk to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Well, we do know it's the twenty-fourth.
It's twenty-fourth.
Location to be decided. If you can have them come to the next week, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Could you please place a phone call to the class president?
I'll try that when I get home, he's not home, so I might have to.
So it is the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
I'll call him.
Treasury report was in the packets, does anyone have anything to add about the Treasury report? Got a couple of new folks involved in the economics of this place. Mr. Gop?
Yeah, thank you. Last week, we finished up our New York State test in English Language Arts, that was grades three through eight. The tests were administered during first, second, and third period and over two days. Next up is our New York State math test. We're excited to have our National Honor Society inductions back to in-person this year. The NHS induction ceremony is scheduled for the evening of Thursday, May fifth, and parents and family members will be invited to join us, so it'll be a nice ceremony. And then to revisit, our students participated in their all-county band on April first and second. Mr. Smith and Miss Taylor brought our students to this two-day event. Our students were well-prepared and did a great job of representing our school and some notable highlights. Our eighth grade clarinetist, Gabrielle Durkey, was chosen to read part of a poem before performing one of the band pieces. Kayden Carter was honored as a senior among other seniors from neighboring districts. And our percussionist, Ashton Legade, he had a short timpani solo near the end of one of our senior band pieces. So again, all was well received and the students did a great job.
That's great, awesome.
I have some footage if anybody wants to see it later.
Pillings and Ground Report was in our packet, we emailed to us any questions about that. She said, out here in the area, the fields are great, there were teams out there today, so.
Today, today.
Discussion items, you're up for Mr. Besson.
Eight twenty-seven.
That's the budget.
The budget. Oh, snow day, snow day.
Oh, the Friday before Memorial Day.
In honor of Andrew's birthday, we decided to use our unused emergency day. So basically, we have one day that we do have to give back attractively. So we're going to add it to the Friday before Memorial Day. And I'm just sharing that with you and I'll make it official for everyone, including Bosie's tomorrow, unless there's any questions. All right, seeing how those two people found out, they're already making reservations.
I was just talking to some of the Harper parents, they get Thursday too, because they didn't use.
We, what happened is in our calendar, they, they, our calendar, they end June 14th on the twentieth, which wasn't needed last year when it was set. It will be needed where Sundays or Monday and Saturday and Friday, but it wasn't originally that way until the state made it a holiday. So therefore, we, we burned one of our snow days reason there.
All right, consent agenda. I'd like to get a motion for all four of those items there, but there's a lot of minutes in item A. Is everyone okay if I bundle these or do you want to go separately?
No, it's okay.
You're okay to bundle?
I'll second that.
I need a motion for consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
Motion.
John? Ellen, John and Ellen, any discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry, just a pause on, Jen and I have one question. Minutes on March fourteen. Just the piece where it discusses the Medicaid eligibility at the very end of page, is that page two? It states at the end, Mr. Besson stated that the Director of People Personnel will make sure that this is Medicaid reimbursable, meaning any of the social work things. It just gets a little bit confusing, but it's not all in Medicaid reimbursable, which is stated in the sentence before. So I didn't know if we wanted to clarify that, just to say.
Where possible.
Right, for cases that are reimbursed, we'll make sure we collect that. No, it just sounds like the general overall, or at least we're going to stack.
Is everyone agreeing that we add where possible to that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the only other one thing, I'm sorry, right before that. But if we grow things right, it says her salary, if we can just do his slash her because we don't know.
That's right.
Who it would be. That was it.
Everybody okay with those modifications?
Yes.
Okay, all, we got two motions on table, all in favor?
Aye.
So those pass with those. Motion to adopt the district's two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget in the amount of eleven million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred forty-eight bucks as stated on the budget notice and property tax report card, need a motion.
Motion.
Amanda?
Hi.
Any discussion? All in favor? And action item B, most to approve the second and final reading of revised policy three-two-two-zero, use of assistance animals, revised policy seven-five-five-two, student gender identity, revised policy one-five-one-zero, regular board meetings and rules, formal parliamentary procedure, in motion. Ella and Amanda, any discussion? All in favor? Anything, action items? Need a motion for C, D? C and D, please, motion for C and D. Christina? Patty? Any discussion? All in favor? I need most to approve the DCIP twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, those dates are. Need a motion.
No, no, it should be twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, all right, I'll read it again.
The form said it because it's the form that. Yeah.
So it's revised to most to approve the DCIP twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, need a motion. John and Ella, any discussion? All in favor?
And just, just, you know, we're already working on the twenty-two, twenty-three plan. So we're doing the delay steps so that everything's in place on July one. When you set up a strategic plan, you're in the superintendent, they can get an actual budget and everything on August thirty-first, which is when this was all due.
I'm going to read this one. So I need most to approve the following resolution to establish transportation and maintenance equipment reserve eight-eight-seven-eight with approval from public, May seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the creation, it was recommended to create this reserve be a resolution at the Board of Education meeting on April eleven, twenty twenty-two. Purpose, this reserve may be used to fund the cost of any object or purpose for which bonds may be issued, specifically transportation and maintenance equipment. Funding methods, voter approval is required to establish and fund this reserve in accordance with the approved proposition. This reserve is funded from surplus dollars available to the school district when it closes its books every June thirty and/or other legally available funds of the school district to fund such reserve fund. Use of the reserve, use of this reserve requires voter approval. Proposition to use these funds indicates it is established for financing in whole or in part the acquisition of school buses, vans, other transportation vehicles and maintenance equipment, including incidental equipment and expenses. Monitor the reserve, the reserve is monitored by the district treasurer. And the funding level, as stated in the approved proposition, this reserve was created with a minimum, maximum limit of two million dollars. I need a motion. Amanda? John? Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve the following resolution, be it resolved at the Board of Education of Florida University School District, Town of Fort Edward. Village of Fort Edward. Should be Village of Fort Edward, in the county of Washington, seeking authorization to lease one sixty-six passenger school bus, not to exceed nineteen thousand five hundred dollars per year for a term of five years at the May seventeenth public vote. Need a motion added to the proposition. Patty? Christina? Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve the following resolution, be resolved, Board of Education, to consider for public vote the board member size from nine members to seven members. This will be added by a vote. Christina? Amanda? Any discussion?
I would like to hear some discussion on this, or hear people's feedback on this, because this was something that I had presented to Mark as a process to go through, and we had had some discussions about it last month at the meeting and decided to table, so that people could think on it and process it. So I personally am just curious what people's thoughts are on this before we vote on it. And then there's, because Mark had sent out to us also the, what would it be, the rotation, as far as what it would look like, and I do have a one concern with regards to that. I'm gonna hold my thoughts, because I tend to share them a lot, and I get that opened up. I'm curious what other people's thoughts are on that.
I think one of the things we talked about was if we were gonna see just a rough number of folks that were signing up for this. Do we have a number of folks that have put petitions in yet?
We do, we have, well, we have one.
One person. And one of the petitions.
One that hasn't handed in.
One that hasn't, right, when does it close?
The eighteen.
Eighteen, yes, the eighteen is the final day.
Where others picked up, yes.
So we got some petitions out there, don't know if they'll turn in, we got one so far. So really, it's not a lot of information. You know, we had ten folks signed up already, we were like, wow, so it's not really.
I don't think that seven members is unrealistic for a district the size, number one. You know, I do feel that with seven members, it's more important for people to come to the meeting, so we have form and, you know, a bullish entity. That, that would be, you know, my only outside concern, but I don't, we don't have that issue now, so in our field, we have that. Anybody else wanna share?
Well, I think what we've seen in the past is when there are open seats, often they've been unopposed, so it'd be nice if we could consolidate and have some competition for the seats, so.
That was my thought as well, that it's been so difficult to find people that are interested in serving on the board and want to be here.
Same thing, is there, same thing, is there, same thing, same thing.
No, I'm good, I just think it doesn't need to change. It's just one of those things where we, we have nine, nine open slots, and we should fill nine open slots to elect diversity.
One hesitation that I wanted to share with regards to Mark's email, which included what the rotation goal would be. My only concern with it, so it would be twenty-eight, twenty-three, twenty-four, no board members would be elected, twenty-four, twenty-five, two board members elected, is that email that I'm gonna talk about, where he had outlined it. My concern with that is in doing that, and I put my stuff in writing, because it helps me to organize it. I, the thing I don't like is that in that one year, the twenty-three, twenty-four year, as we get into the rotation, there would be no vote that would occur, because it wouldn't be necessary. And I do think that annual voting is healthy and necessary for, for positions such as this. And then I also don't like the idea of when, whoever seat it is that expires in twenty-twenty-three, that essentially blocks that current member from running for another term. And I wanted to be clear, that was not my intent or my goal in, in asking about this, because I didn't have any idea what the rotation would look like. And so I don't really think that's fair, if that, whoever it is, their term expires, if they had wanted to run again for a seat again, that, we would be blocking their ability to do that. Whoever those people or person might be may not have a desire to run again, but our decision to move forward with this could potentially close that door, just the reality of the situation. And it, it's just something that made me think about that. So that was my, my concern with it, so, but I appreciate it, if there's feedback.
What would happen if there were, say, somebody got ill, and there was a resignation, I mean, how would that factor into, would it depend on like the seat and the term for that specific seat? Or would it kind of like pull, you know what I mean?
Well, there's a couple of options, we've been there before, right? We'd either appoint someone, if there's, if it's further away, if it's six weeks from an election, we can have a special election, or in some cases, folks were resigning within five weeks of an election, so we just let it ride.
Right.
And have the, have the election.
I think what you were saying is like, if somebody current said, hey, I don't wanna be on the board, and we didn't move forward.
Has a health issue, or has moved, or.
Then we say that first, and see that as long.
And would, that would.
Then that seat would just be eliminated in lieu of something else.
I'm not sure, though, if that is possible, I think that would have to be an attorney question, because I think that seat, like if it still had two years left on that term for that seat.
That's what I was curious for, how that would work, would it be?
We're not seat specific, though.
Right, that's what I was sure.
I don't know that that would necessarily be the case. Currently, right now, we average two seats a year, that's just the way the rotation is. It's different this year because of a resignation and a one-year spot.
Yes.
So there's three seats up this year, but typically, it's two that rotate. So there's always two people on the docket every year, and when that would go, essentially, that's what it'd be.
And that's not to say that, you know, with these concerns, it might be able to make the rotation.
Okay.
Okay, that's a, sure.
Also, to Amanda's, that two will be blocked next year. And the thing about that is if, if they are generally concerned, they could be involved, they'd be as, as a public entity, they'd be involved in the meetings and be allowed to pick up, next year, the seats will be open, I assume. Maybe do those a couple later, something.
It'd be, it's a year off the board, but. Doesn't necessarily mean that it wouldn't happen, yeah, it wouldn't, it's not like they can't come to the meetings and be informed in advance, then I gotta vote.
Take a breath, I'll come back to your show.
All right, so any further discussion on the matter?
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna go with a roll call vote on this one. To H, I'm just gonna go down like, Patty, how do you vote?
For seven.
So you vote, pick for seven, pick, so that would be a, a yes vote?
That's in favor, yeah.
Yes.
I for Ella?
Yes.
James? Amanda?
Yes.
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Kristin?
I'm gonna be the oddball, you're gonna know.
Okay, and I will vote yes. So motion passes, so it will, it will appear on the docket, it's up to the public whether it passes, but it'll appear on the docket. All right, so, most to approve the following resolution, be it resolved, Board of Education, to consider for public vote, the time of office from five years to three years, need a motion for that. Amanda and Christina? Discussion?
Just real quick, that last one was to put it to the public vote, is that what that was?
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought we were just doing like our little column, like, save work.
This was to put it to, that was to put it to the public.
The public.
All right, that was a change vote. So it's unanimous.
Unanimous, but it's in a public vote.
No, no, it was to put it on for the, for the, on the, the May seventeenth ballot, I believe.
And the same thing is for this one.
Yeah.
Any discussion on? I'm just gonna say the same thing I said last time. You hit a groove in this room, you don't really hit a groove until year two, in my opinion, maybe year three.
Yeah.
So to, to invest in a position like this, and likely not be able to be re-elected, depending on the rotation when it goes down to seven, I just don't know that three years is, is really having an effect on anything in this district, but that's just my opinion.
No, especially one without any educational background, so if you want, and it's, it's an adjustment for those who've been, some of us administrators, teachers, whatever, there's an adjustment period there.
I agree that it's helpful, but I don't agree that it's the time, you need five years to get, just, just to get moving in here and understanding the way this, the dynamic in this boardroom, and you all see it, right? You come in here, first couple of weeks, your eyes are wide open, you know, three months, a four months, now you're like, wow, things are a lot different on the inside than you are on the outside.
Reality.
And then you start thinking, okay, what do we gotta do in here? So that's just my thoughts, I'm certainly not a fan.
I agree, I think there needs to be, you know, that five years account for it. You know, especially here, where a lot of this art is constantly have, you know, we had to pay attention to finances for the five-foot foam, stepping, the negotiations, so I think five years is when I have to remember.
I didn't even know what the step was until year two.
That was getting to the second floor, that was.
Exactly, yes, it was really open. All right, so I, I think it's, it's adequate that we do a roll call here for this one as well. So again, Board of Education said a public vote, office from five to three years. Patty, it's not with you again?
No.
Okay, okay. Ella? James?
I wanna put to a public vote.
Yes, for James.
I'm not five years, I'm not.
I still, no, I mean, but not.
Say no?
Christina?
No.
Chris?
No.
And I'm a no. All right, so. The oddball. So that, that resolution does not pass, okay. All right, moving to personnel. Most to appoint Charles Perkins as an individual as the Assistant Central Treasurer for extra classroom accounts, in motion? Christina? James? Any discussion?
Thank you for being.
We'll come tomorrow.
Good to see you, thanks for dressing up, appreciate it.
And Amanda, a few words, even better.
Talk with your numbers, buddy. All right.
We'll, we'll, I'll fill these for you.
All in favor? Welcome aboard, sir.
You have to say he's already gone all in, he ordered some persimmon donuts.
Nice.
It's got Maggie's hope.
Yeah, unfortunately, my five-year-old had four of them in the first.
She's got one box left.
Good to see you.
In the spirit of that, I probably could've clumped all these, can I get a motion for B, C, and D, please? Patty and John? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All good? Again, welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you.
All right, motion to point Amanda Gaines as full-time teacher's aide at a rate of pay per FESS contract effective March two, twenty-twenty-two. Christina? Amanda? Any discussion?
Just what is her position gonna be?
She's on a shot of bronchial, a little bit of air, a bit of, yeah.
All in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Aye.
Aye. You good, James?
Yep.
On, vote for James.
Oh, that was a slot that was open since December.
Yes.
Don't unfortunately find somebody who put in there that.
Coaching. There's one. Most to approve the appointment of Russell Wade as girls varsity softball coach for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two season. Amanda? Patty? I probably should read this before we vote. All appointments are subject to change or compensation proration pending emergency school closings and required reduction in force. All coaching appointments are made pending completion and verification of all required coaching credentials with the stipend per FETA contract commiserate with experience and no other salary benefits. All coaching as particular appointments are subject to reduction in compensation proration pending final student enrollment numbers impending the outcome of any potential mergers and emergency school closings. You have motions, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, excellent, thank you, folks, for all the work on that. And I need a motion, uh, do we have any community comments? Good morning, thank you. All right, now, I need a motion tenured executive session, discuss matters referred to in the appointment for specific individuals. Patty? John? Board of Education members, other individuals, divided executive session, or reminded that all matters discussed during executive session must be kept in the district list. Confidence, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Thank you, folks, for joining us this evening, in person and online.
Thank you.